We ready?
Ready.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order this working session, the Nelson County School Board, October 11th, 2018, at approximately 5:01 PM. I think, are we gonna have some change to the order of the agenda, Mr. Bradley?
So, we are gonna have one change to the agenda, and that is a field trip request.
Okay.
And then the order, the calendar committee will be moved to last, right before the executive session.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, then, the first item, item, or agenda item number three, the Innovate and Grow 3A, the field trip request, Mr. Gall?
The reason that this was put on here for tonight is, this request came in a few days ago. Usually, the board meeting would've taken place on the 16th, I believe, but because of fall break, it was pushed back a week. You can see the trip is actually the 18th and 19th, so we didn't wanna wait until this month's board meeting to notify you all that they were taking an out-of-state trip. They're going to Cincinnati, they're taking, I think, about 10 of their house stewards, student leaders, up there for some, I think, collaboration with some other folks in Cincinnati. So, that's why that is on here, and we wanted to notify you all tonight, so that it wasn't one of those things that was done after the fact.
Is this an item that we would need to have a motion and approval tonight on, because of it being in between the two meetings? Is that right?
Yep.
So, any questions that we might have? So, need a motion then, to approve the field trip request from Thomas House High School for the 18th and 19th?
Motion. You're not making your personal charge.
Motion by Diane Berry, second by Diane Breeding, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Gall.
Thank you, Mr. Gall.
So, then, moving on into Section 4, which is dedicated to our community, the first item we'll do then is for the Personnel Specialist Position.
Yes, this is on here for you, because with the retirement of both Tim and Wanda, this is an area that we're currently unable to cover in the Finance Department, the loss of two employees, and so this will just bridge that gap that we need, and allow us to continue serving our students and our staff the best we can.
I think, two part of our conversations, the, currently, when Wanda retired, that moves Becky to a certain spot, and Julie, just to her role's changed as well, and a big part of that is creating sustainable roles, and some of the work, the workload right now is not as sustainable. We're also adding on a new personnel system, Talent Ed, which is something that's gonna enforce us to work very diligently to ensure that our systems are very well-aligned.
It's gonna create consistent processes and allow, allow us to streamline some processes and make them easier for our employees to understand, and easier for the public to understand and utilize. It will also invite additional people to apply for positions here, in a system that's easier for them to use, 'cause it's being used in many school districts across the state.
And what's it called again?
It's called Talent Ed, and they've just gone to a new name, something Power School, I think, but the system is called, what's called Talent Ed, and we'll start looking at it.
So, it's named it, it's another connection? Yeah.
Studying, the Finance Team and HR Team look very closely at Aesop's Frontline Product and Town Ed, spent many hours evaluating both products, spent time in other districts talking to Finance and HR Teams evaluating those products, and this is something that we are excited, it will be a very essential part of the work, and the interface when people apply for jobs.
I have a question. Of course, I have a question. Okay, on here, now, tell me how this relates, three years of personnel, payroll, or human resource experience, so tell me how that's gonna relate to this position, please?
This position is going to be very closely working with making sure that our records are maintained consistently across multiple programs, in order to understand that, the consistency across multiple programs, they're gonna have to understand a lot of the rules and the laws related to personnel, to human resources, to finance as well. And so, bringing in somebody that has no awareness of those laws, it would be difficult for them to do the job well.
It's almost like a generalist position?
Similar.
Yeah, because, you know, we already have a human resource person, so that's why I asked that question, I wanted to make sure that we understood.
Because, and because all of these programs feed into Munis, which is our financial accounting software, that is, that is the focus of these systems, even, even though they're related in that area that you say, they feed into everything we do financially with our budgets and, and our personnel data in those systems.
Munis is the authoritative source for anything and everything, budget and staff related.
Exactly.
Is this one, that we would need to approve, the creation of this position, so that you could get it posted for the 30-day period, or whatever that length is, or is it something that we're going to do at our regularly scheduled meeting?
I was intending to do it at the regularly scheduled board meeting, and, and of course, it's a classified position, so it doesn't have that 30-day hit.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I was asking that, to see what you wanted us to do next.
I felt, I feel this was just to bring it up to you, to inform you, and that we'd have a regular board meeting. Okay?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then, we will now need to go on down to Item 5, which is Put People First, and the District Social Worker, Ms. McCoy.
So, this is being brought to you as we consider opening up this position, it says District Social Worker, but really, in a certification as a Clinical Counselor, School Counselor, Certified Social Worker, Psychologist can accept the position. As we look at the growth of adverse childhood experiences and trauma in our schools, we realize the need for a position that can really hone in to the coping mechanisms for kids who are experiencing trauma. And so, this, the money that would be used, we're not, it's not really new money, it's Title 4A grant money that would pay for this, as well as this person will be working with some of our past students, and working through coping mechanisms and systems for them, and so, Seek Special Education funding would also help support this role, but the majority is coming from the Title 4A.
So, would this be a person position, it would be a district?
It would be a district person.
So, then, they would be spread across the district?
So, we would try to, we're gonna pull some data to look where our needs are across the data, so, are heavily, you see already some trends across our schools of where trauma's really affecting our kids, and so, we would hone in on where those programs really need to be worked up and running. A person obviously couldn't serve all, all of our schools all the time, so.
Yeah, looking at career four schools.
Right.
Yeah, we're not gonna discuss those now, but I think that's something we need to talk about, because it is, it's just, it is confidential in nature, in a sense, because of the trauma culture.
But you're not gonna limit just those three or four schools, correct?
What do you mean?
Well, if it's gonna be a, is it gonna be someone that can be used anywhere in the district?
They could, but we wanna do it programmatically, where the person is offering specific, like, mindfulness, and art therapy, and physical movement to students who've experienced this. So, we're really looking for the first part of the position, the January start date to the next, it's gonna be like a pilot of how this person could be used, and wanna see them build a program around our neediest schools, so that the person really could be used in just three to four schools at that time, and then we would see how that would grow beyond that.
And possibly more, okay.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, every school, well, every school, we're gonna talk about it, all students, all schools need help.
Yeah.
Some, we've got 'em, folks, whether we like it or not, we've gotta deal with it.
And really, and able to see them perform academically, we're going to, I mean, it's just the reality of the situation now, is we're gonna have to offer these kinds of services.
It's the same thing as putting a nurse in a school, to me.
Oh, absolutely.
This is just, this is phase two of that same program of putting people first, of putting children first.
Yes, yes.
So, my question is regarding the grant money, and for how many years is that grant money?
So, the grant money will, it's not, we don't see it ending.
That's what I'm, okay.
It's Title 4A grant fund, so we don't see that ending. It was, it started, I think, last year, I mean?
It's targeted for safety.
Yeah, it's targeted, it was, it was together with the federal government for safe and healthy schools last school year, and then we had to apply for money, we got the money, and so, it's, there's no ends in sight, of course, the federal government could always get back and say.
Can we bill these services, like we do the nurses, for kids with insurance, or Medicaid, passport, et cetera? Does the company that does our billing for our nurses, will they bill the mental health as well, to recoup funds? And can we recoup funds that we got from this Title 4?
You can have a position that does that. We see some barriers, we already see that barrier, as we know with behavioral health entities coming to us, they can't take certain insurances, and so, this program allows this person to be able to see all kids. If we ever were to think about growing social workers, and clinical counselors, and things, we would have to go along those lines, as they would see more therapy, or offer more therapeutic services, and then you can bill Medicaid, or you can bill private insurance, perhaps. But you, you really have to get really specific, and at this point, I'm just afraid to create barriers for these kids who have trauma, that we just can't, you know, provide their need, or meet their needs right now.
Isn't this part of SSA?
It's ESSA, that's right, yes.
Because I think we, I'm on something else, and we were talking about that move right along, that, that implies the same ruling of SSA, that's part of it, that we have to make work.
Right.
I mean, that's the way it's gonna be.
Yeah, okay.
The, the question that Ms. Diane asked there about the grant piece, and I think sometimes that can be the confusing thing for us, 'cause typically, I think of a grant, and I think, well, we wrote something that got us some money for a specific amount of time, and I believe, is the nomenclature using, whenever the federal government uses it, or even KDE uses it, is it's grant funds, but it's money that's being passed through that was gonna be coming that direction anyway, making sure that you filled out a piece of paperwork.
That makes sense, yeah.
And renewable.
And renewable.
For all intents and purposes, recurring for, but the, but the position itself will have to come out.
Same thing with like, Title 1, Title, longer, Title 2, but, well, Title 2, no longer, Title 3.
This is a non-competitive, this is a?
We don't, yeah.
It's like Title 1, those type of programs.
Keep it rolling, yeah.
Yeah, the, the term grant is used in a different format than what you or I, I think, would normally.
It just looks better when it says grant.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. That one always confuses me, 'cause even whenever Hawkins Smith would at times present the budget and talk about, these are the grant dollars over here that's coming from KD, the first thing I think is, oh, it's, we've got 'em just this year, but no, it's that, it's that terminology that KD uses for those funds that they send on to the school districts. Okay, so, this one then, we'll be looking at a final approval at the board meeting, okay? And I think I heard you say that the goal would be to try and start January 1st, okay?
Soon as it's better.
This is just another question, can we approve it tonight, so she can go ahead and get started on it, and then we don't double, we don't repeat it again at the next meeting? Or do we have to repeat it again at the next meeting?
We have to repeat.
Where's my rule?
I think so.
What, what would you wish, Ms. McCoy?
Well, I'm always, earlier the better, I love to vote for the position, but I think, I mean, the person would not start really until January, to find somebody.
In a time.
So, yeah, and that's really because we want, if anybody's gonna apply for that position, I, I really wanna be specific about who we choose, so they're.
Right, so you wanna take your time.
To pick somebody, so I don't mind if it's approved tonight, so it gives us time, but if it's approved at the board meeting, they still don't start until January.
Okay, that's a good question, that's a good question, so, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. McCoy.
Thank you.
So, now, it looks like we are circling back around to Item 4, dedicated to community and 4A, the 2019-2020, that's next school year, school calendar.
We're gonna do something a little different here, for a time, so, this actually can work for your companies too, not that you would need to do this today, but in the future, we might get to that point, especially as we collaborate on things.
So, right now, Jessica's gonna project to Carlos, she's gonna project to Carlos' screen here. And it worked earlier, but now that you said it, it probably will not work.
Now, she's certainly.
Yeah, so, it's just using an extension, which we were using earlier, and it worked fine, so, we'll give it a couple minutes.
Yeah, so, that's fine, I can go ahead and do yours. So, this is just gonna have the information with the three calendar options that we're gonna talk about, tonight, that you have them to reference, is a hard copy versus looking at it on the screen.
I've got one here.
You have yours, please.
Yeah, I can do it, the mine works, so I can do it, and she can take mine and do her.
Well, I'm thankful to click for me.
It worked before he brought it up.
No, he hasn't said anything, it would've been fine.
This is a hard copy, this is also digital, digitally linked in.
Yes, it is.
This is the hard copy version.
I'm gonna X off real quick and try one more time.
I'll see if I can get to it.
Let's just talk. Oh, cool. Do you really just let me have your computer then?
I don't know.
So, now, I'll be on Wes's computer, and try to, Carlos. All right, so I'm gonna explain the process that I'm going through first, so that way you can have some insight into kinda where this stuff is coming from. So, we formed a calendar committee, and we met on Tuesday to start the whole process, to give them this information, to give it to you guys, and I'll go through the timeline as that is occurring. So, really thinking about with the committee is how we are aligning our calendar to achieve our district mission, so everything that we've been forming and coming about with, we wanna make sure that the calendar reflects those things that we're doing. So, I went through with the committee, the Nelson County School core priorities, really thinking about the work that we're doing with Pride, really focusing and zoning in on the backpacks, and thinking about inspiring our leaders and learners, and the work that our schools are doing with that, and how that reflects in the days that are being used within the calendar, and what that could look like for teachers, and for students. And then, of course, our shared leadership, not only sharing the leadership of the committee for the calendar, but also thinking about how we're starting to pour more and more community members into our schools, to be a part of those discussions with our students, and again, how that looks for that time and space in the calendar, to be able to help schools make that happen. So, here's the school calendar committee that we would like to form, and on it, we have lots of representation across the district. On the left, this is what is considered by state policy and the board policy, the members that have to make up the committee. Out to the side, so Leah Harden, you see she's from New Haven, but I'm a part of the board administration, but I'm also a parent of a child from the Early Learning Center, and two from Copsus Creek, so, we have multiple members that make up multiple facets of the committee. So, we have several that are not only employees, but are parents, and we have two business partners, that, one came from the Chamber, and just so happened to also be the We Care Director, and then, we reached out to an actual Discovery Child Care Center, not knowing that Lance was gonna be at the board, and so, we had two major daycare workers that service our kids on snow days and days that we take off, so it was really insightful to hear from them as well, so it ended up being some really great local business partners come in. As I'm going through this, if you have any questions about the current slides I'm on, please feel free to ask, so, any questions about the makeup of the committee? So, this is how the strategic plan is looking, like I said, we met on Tuesday here in the central office to initially give them the information, so that they could take this information back, and presenting it to you all tonight, so that you can kinda let it sit, think about it, form more questions, talk to other people, and that was kinda the task of the committee once they left, it was to take the three options and think about what makes sense to them, talk to some of their colleagues, talk to other parents, talk to other community members about the impacts of what they see on the calendar. The three different options were presented to them as a starting point, I don't wanna come in and start from scratch, that's a very proactive thing to do, and with those three options, it's, they're not even set in stone. We can take the three options and pull something from Option C, and put it into Option A, or Option B to C, so there is a little diversity in each, so that you could see more options within the option. So, once, we're gonna come back as a committee on the 25th of October to hopefully finalize, we're all communicating through email, and they've already sent me different questions that they've asked about this, they're already starting to ask other people questions, so we'll hopefully come together the 25th and have a more coordinated calendar that we've thoroughly researched. And then, I will come back to you guys on November 1st, the working board session, to show you which one the committee is leaning towards, and what we're hoping to present on November 13th, to hopefully adopt in the final calendar. We talked about this at the committee meeting, we'd like for one of the earliest school districts in the state to approve their calendar, and we felt that this was very great for, especially for our high schools, to do so much movement, and as a former high school counselor myself, getting those middle schoolers in as soon as you can, to make those transition dates, same thing for fifth graders to go into the middle schools for those transition dates, it's such powerful work that can begin early on, that when they come into your building as a freshman, it's, it's just so much more relaxing, talking about servicing the whole child, and really creating some space, putting people first, it's, it's a really big thing.
What Jessica's talking about is, a little bit, if we don't have the calendar in January, you can't start the scheduling, so that's kind of the issue. With that said, with that said, I think it's this potential adoption of the calendar, if we don't feel really good about it on the 13th, we can move it back to December, you know, it's, like, it's just, we wanna feel really good about it, and I think, as we, we've been talking about Pride Games, and these other annual events that we know are, you know, that are already current, how do they fit into the calendar, and really strategically placing those, so that people have that out six to eight months in advance, and then it's also gonna be important.
This is the law, the KRS, that I presented to the committee as well, really looking at this, what I put in bold are kinda the biggest things that we looked at, the, KD says that you have to have 185 days within the school day, or the school year, that includes instructional days, that includes professional development days, along with actual student attendance days, so 185 is not how many days the students have to be in the building, just how many days you have to have in the calendar. Nelson County Schools, our teachers get paid for 186, so we're one day over what KRS requires you to have, and then, for student instructional days, they have to be in attendance 170 days, so you can see that at the second bullet there. And then, some other amendments that are through there, that, the variable student instructional year, that is really working with kind of the hours and playing around with, if you take a half day early, you know, once a week, or you go to a four-day schedule, I spoke to the committee about this, I don't feel like it's a district we're there yet, I feel like that's something this year that we could go out to other school districts and look at, and really, we would have to have a lot of data to support moving to something like that, that would be work inconsistent for our district. And then, our NTI, non-instructional days aren't necessarily within the calendar, those kinda come up as, as needed, so it's not something else that has to be worked into the calendar just yet. This is just the law about who has to make up the committee, and the calendar shall have an opening day, a closing day, it must have four professional days, four holidays, which one has to be Martin Luther King Day, and then, it just talks about the, having makeup days as well, and that's based on the past five years, how many snow days you've had, and for us, that's 17, so, so 17 makeup days have to be worked into that calendar as well, and that is kind of the big stuff we're doing.
We average nine snow days before NTI over five years, from the course of 2009 to 2014, we have an average of nine, so that's 45 snow days over five years, which led to NTI days.
When I started this process, I kinda just poked around and talked to a few people about, like, what would you see, what kind of things would you like us to start thinking about, as we're coming through the calendar. I envisioned this to grow a little bit over the next two weeks, as people are starting to filter in some more questions and ideas. Some people talked about having students go less days, going from 174 down to 170, I'll dig a little bit more into this, and kind of explain how that could potentially look for us as a district, but really starting to think about, right now, they're called workdays on our calendar for this current year, changing that name to backpack days, and when you really think about the inspiration that we're trying to build upon our leaders and our learners, having teachers to have that time to be able to create those four extra days could really, really be powerful for our students and staff and our community. The key listing colors is just kind of a side note, it's the way the, we can lay out the, kind of the key at the bottom for classified and certified staff, and when your X out of this, have like an example of it over here, well, it's already buried down here after some comments made, but, it's just a way to make it, to make it look, so, it's nothing to actually affect the calendar. And then, the last thing, I had an email from a principal who inquired about having a parent of, kind of a backpack day, to be able to do parent-teacher conferences during the day. No, you had made a comment like, oh, gosh, are we gonna have parent-teacher conferences all day, and then we have nothing in the evening?
No, I'm for it, as.
Absolutely, but as a working parent myself, that, it doesn't make sense, but doing something where we shift their, the time of day, they come in a little bit later, and stay later, and be able to work with those parents that, you know, work the third shift, think about the parents that work the second shift, to create some time for them to be able to come in and do some parent-teacher conferencing. So, that's what the principal was wanting to, to look into, and so, there's a couple surrounding districts that do it as well, that I'm making contact with, to see about with time frame, and what that kinda looks like for them as well. So, again, I feel that this will, will grow. I did link down here, my mouse is like slower up there than it is on my computer, but the state calendar, don't want me to go down there, but you can pull up all the state calendars and compare them, it's just, it's in an Excel file, and it shows you how many professional days every district gives, how many staff work days, holidays they're taking, it's huge, and has a great way to compare and kinda see what we look like compared to everybody else. Attendance data conclusions, really wanted to start looking into the attendance, and what the, the different types of data is telling us about when kids are coming to school, when they're not coming to school. Some of this plays into the calendar, some of it, it's just interesting knowledge to have, and to think about, and see if it really, truly was affecting our calendar. Attendance is typically lower on Mondays and Fridays, everybody wants that extended weekend, and really thinking about, if we extend our backpack days and have more of them, or keep, right now, we apparently have four, when should we place some in the calendar? And so, if we're thinking about attendance being lower on Mondays and Fridays, those typically seem like two good days to place them on. We talked about, Wes and I, shorter weeks, does that have implications on the calendar, thinking about Thanksgiving only having those two days? Attendance is about 2% lower during the time, I was gonna pull up my attendance data.
You guys have access to this?
Yeah, all this is on there, but just to kinda show you where I'm pulling this from, I keep, for the past three years, I've been looking at trends that are happening daily, pretty much, and so, if you look in November, and come down to the past two years before Thanksgiving, it was 94, 93%, then 93 and 91%, so, a little bit lower than kind of what we've seen average around, but, in the big scheme of things, when you're looking at the average for the year, it doesn't make a huge dent on those two days. Thinking about coming off of the fall break, just a few weeks prior to that, thinking about taking another full week off, not sure that that's super beneficial, and the first semester tends to be shorter than the second semester already, so, is that something that we would want to do? Not sure if that's where people are kinda falling out of their thought processes.
So, for example, you would, I hypothesize that we have this year on our calendar, the 20th, is it the 20th? 18th and 19th, Monday and Tuesday on the calendar, you would hypothesize attendance on those two days might be low, because Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they don't go to school. Because Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they don't go to school. People might leave for the holidays on Monday and Tuesday, right?
I'm just thinking about people, but I understand why people do.
So with that said, we just have to be aware, how much does this impact our students if we make those decisions? We don't know what's going to happen this year. We, we also know that we need to have meaningful experiences and expectations for kids every day. But we also don't want to set ourselves up in some cases for challenges that are structural that a school is working against. So that's, that's part of our conversation. And it's why this is not an attendance data report. This is a implications of attendance on calendar decision making.
The only, the only time I was ever concerned was truly Thanksgiving week. Because parents, they travel. I mean, by car more than a flight. So if you're going to go from Kentucky to, let's say, you know, North Carolina or Florida to whatever, to grandmother's house they go, it just means they take a day before. And that's where I always felt like we needed more attention was Thanksgiving week.
Definitely look at it.
Yeah, really.
We can make that and get some more filters out there too.
Yeah, please, please do.
To kind of see where they fall with that too. The next thing I looked at was really just zoning in on fall break because we had a really great opportunity last, this past Monday, where one of our backpack days fell on Monday. So thinking about before the breaks, before attendance is lower, 88, 92, and 92% the past three years versus when kids are coming back, it's 94, 93, 95, it's higher. And one of the committee members said, because people are like, okay, you can have them back now. So thinking about those backpack days, should they fall before or after the breaks, if that's something we wanted to look at too.
Was attendance higher this, this time around?
Yeah, it was 95% on Tuesday.
So right there is, yeah.
Yeah, that was a really good attendance data for us.
Still arbitrary. I think the unfortunate, I mean, unfortunately, the last bullet point kind of summarizes where we are with this. We, we can't say for certain that they are clear. That if we do this, it's going to do this. We can't.
There's no cause and react, no causal reaction that we identify, but it's all pieces of data. It's, it's just like the historically, and like I brought up during the committee meeting, is that historically, we try and make the last day of school be as close to a Friday as possible, if not a Fri, on a Friday. And then snow happens. And there've been some years where we've ended up had it being the hours and the number of instructional days. To where adding one more snow day to have us come back on the Tuesday after Memorial Day was not something that had to be done. And so we forgave that one day, ended on a Friday. And of course, the reason for that historically has been graduations at night, project grad afterwards, and all of us that need to recoup over the weekend from participating in project grad. Anybody that's ever done that knows it's a taxing experience. I see you shaking your head. We've been there and done that, right? Yeah. So, and that's again, kind of an arbitrary piece of data there, the reason why we do that. But still having all these data points, it kind of helps us think through, is there some things we can do that makes it, makes it a bit easier, a little bit better.
So really thinking more a little bit about the backpack days and kind of understanding that this is the right fit for our calendar for next year. Thinking about where we're going as a district, where our realities are at, our timelines for these different programs that we're trying to develop, these different visions that we're having for each of our schools. Really those backpack days are to be able to hit all of these different points. We have really put more things out there, experiences for our teachers to start building, our principals to start building. But if we're not giving them the time to collaborate together, then reaching some of these things could find it to be a little more difficult. So backpack days could really help our district meet these things in a much more timely fashion, a much more thoughtful way versus trying to stick it into just those current four backpack days that we have. And with that said, I wanted to, if you're not on Twitter and you didn't get the chance to see some of the backpack day experiences that happened this past Monday, these were just four tweets that went out from our staff members. This is Sean Smith from Thomas Nelson. Every Thomas Nelson PLC team has been paired with a community partner. They actually went out with Gary Bishop and Rochelle Jennings and are trying to help preserve the history of Nelson County and develop a reality app to capture all those historical documents. I even ran into them at lunchtime and they were eating lunch with the community members. So just that piece of that connection that they wouldn't be able to do on a normal school day. Jessica Geese had the cafe leaders in, in here, in this room, doing some educational training and really some fun, exciting stuff to bring them together. New Haven took out some time to do some mindfulness training, some trauma-informed practices, really thinking about the school and thinking about what their teachers need to be able to service those students, gave them that time and opportunity to do that. And then Cox's Creek was having fun doing some breakout sessions for their teachers by literally playing the game Breakout and having a little bit more fun with their staff and just that rejuvenation and allowing them the time to build better experiences for their students. So fun stuff from the backpack days. So now the really fun stuff. I created a calendar comparison chart because it's really hard to, you know, spread these out and try to figure out make sense of what calendar's saying what. So I put this in your folder along with each calendar option. The gray column is our current calendar for this school year. It shows our contracted days, 186 all the way across, instructional days, then it goes down. The holidays are four out of eight because our staff, our teachers, certified classified teachers and staff get four holidays on their contract. Several other staff members that are more year-round are contracted for eight holidays. So those eight holidays have to be identified on the school calendar as well. So there are four identified for staff and then our teachers and then the eight for anybody else that gets the full eight of the holidays. We have professional learning days, four of those, which is again required by the state. And then we have staff backpack days, which this year has been marked down as staff work days. And then it shows all the start and end dates. I went ahead, Damon, kind of contacted me before we started some of this work and said, one thing they spent a lot of time on last year was counting. How many days were in this each semester, each quarter? So I went ahead and broke that down to take away some of that time from the committee of really thinking through that work. And being a former high school counselor, it was a really neat process to be able to kind of line things up of where it made sense for things to fall for finals and thinking about credits for students and items like that. And then our fall, winter, and spring break are down there as well. I'm going to give you a quick overview of each option of what the main differences are. Option A is the most mirrored to our current calendar. It has exactly the same types of dates, start and end dates are very similar. You can see the semester times are all about the same. Breaks, as far as length, are all the same time as well. So very similar to what we currently have. Option B and C are kind of our reimagined possibilities. They're a little bit different and provide our staff with some more backpack days and kind of play around with a couple of the other dates. Option B takes our students down to 170 days versus 174 instructional days and ups our staff backpack days from four to eight. The big differences here, as you can see though, the semesters worked out beautifully to both be equal to 85, which I think teachers appreciate. And then for our fall breaks and winter and spring break, kind of fall within the same ranges too. You can see the fall break's a little bit longer because one of the staff backpacks fall on the Friday before fall break. So that's why it looks a little bit longer for students. Option C, then I was trying to think of other ways to really look at this as different from what we've normally done. And really, if you look at the start date, it would have us starting school a week later than we normally do. So just wanted people to be able to see what an option like that would look like. When I looked at the state comparison chart, I saw several schools that were doing this started a week later than we did. And so kind of played around with their calendars, looked at theirs, see what they did, amendment some of those things so that we would be kind of similar in a sense. Semester one and semester two, though, are not necessarily an equal value there. But then again, going back to the kind of the counseling world and thinking about how heavy assessments are at the end of the year, teachers lose some instructional time because of the testing that takes the place. So being heavier with days in semester two is not necessarily a bad thing either because you're allowing some of those extra days to take on the onset of all that testing that comes along with it as well. So really, I'll go back to that side in a minute. So really from here, the next steps for the committee were to take these, have conversations with people, conversate with each other via email, text, whatever, to talk about how we're seeing this information play out. And then I'm kind of coming to you all with the same ideals is to, we can discuss a little bit tonight, but really I think letting it sink in and thinking about what makes sense for us as a district and where we want to go with this. I will, before we take any questions anybody might have, this is the last slide on here, is common frameworks. This is nothing that's, we're legally bound to at all. I took this from Fayette County. They had a sheet that just talked about kind of some guidelines that they follow year from year while they're making the calendar. So this is really to think about things that we're doing, kind of trends that we're kind of sticking with and things that we see kind of happening over the years and just building upon that. So next year, when we sit down to do this, I won't have to think, okay, so why did we do this? So it's really just from a year-to-year thing to start thinking about, what are some things that we're discussing and looking at? So just a way for us to build a framework to go into the next coming years, highlight the things that we're really wanting to start to look at. Things we've always done, those are things we always want to keep doing.
I like grandma always cutting the end of the ham off. Jim knows what I'm talking about. One thing too, and I can't remember if we talked about it during the committee meeting or if it was just a hallway conversation. One thing we've always historically tried to do is get with Bardstown, the city school system, and try and do some comparisons and some alignments there as well. And I think you said that whenever you reached out, they had not even gotten to the point we are yet, that we were way ahead of them.
So reach out to Todd again and we'll see where they're at with theirs and we'll give you all an update and then.
Yeah, they, I mean, I know the city school system, they do the two fall, two week fall, two week spring, if I remember correctly. And so it, it never aligns up exactly, but we do have parents and families, whether they are all within the same household or they are split across possibly split families. And trying to do what we can to also be considerate. So, but I, I just couldn't remember where we had talked about that, but that's something we're, we'll still end up looking at as well.
Not that some of their framework falls off some of the same things that we did in the first full week of, you know, October for fall break, April for spring break. So some of their guiding things that they've used in the past fall was in the same ways that we work with too. So I have a feeling we'll be following that.
We're also sharing this with all the principals and doing video for them to have access to all this information so that they can use it and share with their teams.
Just tremendous amount of work to work with. I think what, you made the comment that we're always forced to begin school districts in the state as far as getting our calendar in. I think we're a bit ahead this year and ahead of past year as far as with all of the work that's already been put into it.
You can take back up.
Thank you, Mrs. Coss. So I believe now we have put everything back in order, Mr. Braden. Is that correct?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So then the next item on our agenda, item six, would be student stakeholder engagement, guest comments. I'm not going to read it, but if there's anybody that would like to have guest comments. Okay, then I would need a motion to convene executive session for KRS 61.810 sub 1 sub K and KRS 156.557 sub 6 sub C for preliminary board chair discussion of the summit of evaluation of the superintendent. Motion by Ms. Breeding, second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. I think we'll be meeting back in the.